Please rise and join us in pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All this meeting, Westbury County Council, order, roll call please.
Crowner.
Here.
Rowley, Stewart, here, please.
Here.
West.
To perfect and approve the agenda, item number seven, I'd like to remove that till next week's meeting. So we'll just pull that.
Motion approved as amended.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Stewart.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Motion carried, consent agenda.
Motion approved as presented. Support.
Motion with support to approve consent agenda items one through fifteen, which is the minutes of regular city council meeting on June twentieth, two thousand and twelve. Liquor license renewal for Target, liquor license for LNF trading, Westwood Mall, approved city administrators attendance at the ICMA annual conference, approved the sale of two portable radios on GovDeals, approved payment to Foreigner Bakken, approved payment to ACO, approved payment to Quad City Analytical, approved payment to Missville Supply, approved payment to Maggie Speaks, approved payment to Jump for Fun, approved payment to Thunder and Lightning Productions, approved payment to Mail Foundry, approved the payment to the Westbury School District, and approved the claims as presented in an amount of one hundred ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-one cents, and that breaks down to general fund sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventeen cents, hotel motel tax two thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents, road use four thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty-three cents, TIF capital projects three thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty-six cents, TIF debt service fifty thousand dollars, equipment replacement for water six thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-three cents, equipment replacement administration six thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-three cents, equipment replacement for sewer six thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-four cents, two thousand and eleven general obligation bond three thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and nineteen cents, water fifteen thousand, eighty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents, sewer thirteen thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-six cents, medical insurance reserve three thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and thirty-two cents, flex account four hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-nine cents, and the Fourth of July celebration eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and fourteen cents. Any discussion?
I actually just thought about this. I made, on the agenda, I said the check goes to Maggie Speaks, but it does say to make the check to Final Say, and I'm sure they made the check to Final Say.
It was.
Okay. Any other thing else? Roll call.
Just to clarify that Maggie Speaks owns Final Say.
Farther.
So that's, it's a little confusing on their contract. Sorry.
Roll call.
Please.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Motion carried, committee reports. Hi, Ms. Rod.
I don't have anything new. I think I'll reserve to give a final Fourth of July report, maybe when everybody's here. We're missing so many people, I don't want to go into thank yous and have some of them not being here, so.
Got some money to give away too, probably.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do that, and I haven't had a chance to get with Leslie to do that, so I think we'll just hold that on the next meeting, if you don't mind.
That's fine.
Other than that, I don't have anything. I see you got, Dennis is gonna talk about the airport, though.
Hop up, Dennis.
Hop up.
Want me to use this thing?
Good evening, yeah, that'd be fine, yeah.
Okay.
That way it's on.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Been a while since we've been here, thought it was time to update you on what's going on at the airport. Got a few things here that I think could be of interest. My first item is the status of Air Choice One. If you will remember, last January, when they, Air Choice One received approval from the DOT, they only granted a one-year approval with a stipulation for achieving code share agreements with major airlines in Chicago, and then they would extend it another two years. Well, we were very, very worried about it, really, it was kinda leaving us in the air what was gonna go on. Shane Storrs has been working very hard to try to get those, but getting cooperation from the big airlines, it seemed to be rather difficult, at least. During region days out in Washington DC, Charlie Walsh, Mary Beard, and Shane Storrs made an appointment to visit with the DOT out there, in fact, they visited the same guy that signed the letter, concerning our concern about what would happen, because we would certainly hate to lose, lose our flights to Chicago, even though we don't have, say, a complete service package. So they came back feeling real good, the DOT felt that maybe they'd acted pretty hastily with the matter, and it came back really with verbal assurance that they would continue that service another two years, so we felt really, really good about that. Passenger activity, I just took a minute here and summarized the activity here for this year, compared it with the same period, no, not the same period, but for the average of last year. And this is just through May. Through May, we had three thousand, three hundred and nineteen employments, an average of six hundred and sixty-three per month. This compares with the two thousand and eleven, twelve-month average, of five hundred and eighty-three employments for a fourteen percent increase. So we're doing pretty well there. A lot of times, the planes are full, and so they're gonna have to look at either added flights or bigger aircraft, if the growth continues there. Financial picture, you probably missed Mary and I coming out here and looking for money last fall, I imagine, but our financial picture is much improved. A year or so ago, we were having really trouble with K flow, and that has improved with additional activity in the airport. We've seen increases in our fuel, we receive eight cents per gallon on the aviation fuel, and also four dollars and thirty-nine cents per passenger employment. And there are some other sources of revenue that have picked up as well. The, now, a little bad news, in the past, for federal grants, required a five percent match. Now, that has been changed to ten percent, with the economy the way it is, and with all the governments just putting a little more squeeze on us local people here, so. The only big project we had coming up was a aircraft parking effort rehabilitation there in front of the airport, and that was one point three estimate. Five percent of that was sixty-eight thousand, now that goes to one point six. What we may do with that one, and maybe some other projects, is extend it out if it's not really too serious, and let some of those funds accumulate. We do get some grants that, if we don't use it, we could carry it over, so. That is, that is going to mean, maybe, well, you'll see Mary and I coming again about budget time, maybe. Also, I guess I wanted to thank West Burlington for the funds, the runway and taxiway rehabilitation, that was a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar project, is complete now, looks really nice, and it is a, really, a nice improvement to that part of the airport. And we did get all the three entities lived up to their obligations, and everything's taken care of. Appreciate that. There's supposed to be an open house, or we'll be cutting for that sometime later on, so you may have an opportunity to come out and see it firsthand. We've added a defibrillator for the airport terminal, Great River Medical Center was good enough to donate a unit to us, and the MedAir people, which is a division of Jet Air, they have some, you know, air ambulances serviced, and they're gonna do the training for the airport personnel, so that's a nice thing. We're also looking at adding security cameras around the airport, covering at least, you know, the gates, building onto the field, and some of the other areas. So as I understand, the cost of those systems has really come down in recent years, so we are looking into that now, but probably get that done with what funds are available. We are gonna have an air show this year, in September, September twenty-first and twenty-second. Looks like there's gonna be another good show, they've got some good acts already booked for that. So that's the end of my list, I golly.
Good list.
Yeah, yeah, it is, it is a pretty good list, and kinda started thinking about it, and there's quite a little bit here to communicate, so.
Even with the matching grant going up to ten percent, it's still, you know, every dollar brings in ten, you know, nine more.
That's right. It's based in the community, usually. Yep.
Hate to see them go up, but I understand it, too.
Yeah, sure, yeah, it's very understandable, the way situations are, yeah.
So the flights are pretty well filled up during the weekdays, Dennis, huh?
Well, yeah, sometimes, particularly during the busy times, Hans, that, you know, I've heard people say they tried to get on, and at a certain time, it couldn't, particularly Chicago, I believe.
Yeah. I heard in the last six months, it's hard to get a ticket, other than on weekends.
I hear, yeah.
Which is good.
Yes, it is.
Well, thank you very much. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis, for taking your time.
Thanks, Dennis.
Is there anything else for finance tonight? All right, streets, looking here, I think we've got, correct me if I'm wrong, Frank, I think we had three, maybe three blowups last week.
Yeah, I know of one, for sure, but.
There's one out by the truck stop, and one on Ramsey on the four-hundred block, and then one on Pennington, that's been there for a while. Then there's a fourth one, that, by Casey's, it's just kind of a small hump, but it's going all the way across the road.
I noticed they were working on those, though.
Yeah, a pink one got fixed today, so this kind of weather with the high heat, stuff happens. I don't have anything else for streets, anybody have anything? Public safety. Chris.
I don't have anything, but we got my chiefs.
Well, I know we're working on Chief O'Lean's old car, trying to bring it up to production. We've found a cage that a larger PD's, now that they're not using Crown Vics anymore, some of the larger PD's are buying new cars that are not Crown Vics, and we were able to obtain a cage for that car. I know Sergeant Ryan's checking with the Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau, and they said, yes, we can reapply to move some of that money towards video equipment, because that car has no video camera, or any video in it. And we're looking at, we're looking for a pair of lights in there, see if we can come up with something for more lighting on that squad car. I know Lieutenant Hand applied for a thousand-dollar grant from Walmart, we should know in a couple weeks to replace our steel video cameras inside the squad cars to take photos. And then this is probably the first council meeting since the month of June, so I ran stats, and I'll just share them with you, it'll just take a couple of seconds. West Burlington Police responded to two hundred and sixty-two calls for service in June, amounted to forty-seven arrests on sixty-seven different charges. That created seventy-four incident plate, incident reports, or complaints, where eighteen were marked inactive because they had no leads, four were still working on their active cases, and fifty-two were cleared for a seventy percent clearance rate, which is axed, really very good. They did a hundred and seven traffic stops last month that resulted in forty-three written warning tickets, twenty-four citations, forty verbal warnings, and five parking tickets. So it was a busy month for the police department. Anybody have any questions?
You got Mike?
Buildings first, Borges made their changes to the parking that Councilman Crowner asked about a couple months ago, they have made some shifts in, when they did their shift changes, and Ken Plummer said the parking's taken care of, I've been done by there a couple times, and it's wide-open street at that point. Cobo, however, hasn't made any changes, and I did have Frank write a ticket today that they parked in front of a fire hydrant out there on the street, so maybe that'll kinda drive it, that we're serious about what we're talking about. Flex sales addition is completed, the fairgrounds, I closed the construction site down for three days for no permit, it has reopened and it has been completed. Rentals inspections continue, the Klein Center, a week and a half ago, went through with the state fire marshal representative, only found some very minor problems, very pleased on how we're keeping up on everything, and the minor problems were some caulking and some spray insulation on some steel members of the building, something that they handled pretty quick. We also have received four more change orders with twelve different changes on those twelve orders, on the four orders, there was twelve different changes. School, working on the roof structural components, interior, they're starting to gut the school and trying to get that done, they're still trying to, they're saying they're still gonna try to get it done before the school opens, and it's gonna be a pretty, pretty tight schedule. And bridgeway remodel should be completed by late this week or early part of next week. On the fireside Pink Hills tour, paperwork's been filed in Phoenix, only thing they're waiting on now is who we're gonna give the donations to, and that's all we've gotta do. Pancake breakfast fed thirteen hundred and fifty people, so a good community turnout for the fire department. On August fifteenth, FM Global will be here to present a check to the fire department for twenty-five hundred dollars for training materials, a new computer tripod and a video camera. The Safer Grant has been approved from FEMA, five hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars over four years, at no cost to the city, not one dime. This is basically gonna supplement the budget over the next four years, we cannot use any of this money towards the budget that has been approved, or the next three budgets after this. This is a standalone grant, and it's basically, I did, when we've applied for this grant, I did put out a breakdown to the council, it has the breakdowns per year, you should have received it several months ago. Basically, we're gonna increase the payroll for the firefighters, increase the wages for the officers, we've got recruitment money, Dan and I are working towards recruiting some daytime firefighters, if we can, and use that money the first year for that, higher education for college, training reimbursement for going to classes, mileage and things, awards program, personal protective equipment for new recruits, we'll get, a new person comes on board, he gets new stuff from his helmet, all the way to his boots, at no cost to us, and then a college higher education stipend also, so if some of the guys wanna go to college, we'll pay books and tuitions out of this. Next council meeting, I will have to have a, I'll get with Kelly, I talked to the mayor, we have to have a resolution to proceed with this for FEMA. After we do that, then we can get with FEMA and do the breakdown of what everybody's gonna get paid, the incentives, and all that stuff. One thing I do wanna make perfectly clear, that the fire chief gets no benefits from this grant whatsoever, it's all on the volunteer side, from the deputy chief down to the probationary firefighter. So I wanna make that perfectly clear, that that's nothing in there for the four years for me. It's basically a standalone grant. Basically, what we're doing is we're trying to get back to the Quad City days, of when the Quad was here, and getting the money back to the firefighters that they lost. During the twenty-one months I've been here, there's been a group of people that have been helping me with the grant program, which has been Skylar Limkin, Mike Stewart, and Sean Ryan, and in the twenty-one months, we have brought in four hundred, or five hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars to the city, at the cost to the city of nine hundred and fourteen dollars only. So it's a pretty good return on their money. We have one point seven million dollars of grants out right now, that are on file and looking for approval, that will be coming in, hopefully. You did get the letter that I received from the congressman on support of our AFG grant for our extrication equipment SCBA's and the pumper, which we just filed last Friday, or we filed before Friday, but the cutoff was last Friday. Also, the National Safety Council, we're involved with them this year on getting fire prevention material for the kids, the grade school kids at the school, again, no cost to our budget, they're gonna take care of that, and we've received quite a bit of money from, for them, and has been forwarded to the council. And we're also now working on the Safer Grant two thousand and twelve, for the department for training funds, and updating our audiovisual equipment. And that's all I've got.
Anything for either of the chiefs?
So you've increased revenues to the fire department approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, eight hundred some, per year with your grant?
Uh, yeah.
If you break it out over four years, approximately?
The four-year grant, the first year's a hundred and twenty, three forty-five, and the last year's a hundred and forty-one, four ninety-five. Right. For a grand total of five hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars.
That's awesome.
We're working hard at it, if we can get the other million seven, we'll be really good shape. I mean, that's just saving our budget, and what I'd have to come to the council over the years and try to get, it's, I think the guys and myself are, we're busting our humps to get this department up where it needs to be, and we're using as much grant money as we can get. So in less than two years, bringing in five hundred and ninety-five thousand, that additionally would have to come out of the city's money eventually, I think it's a wonderful thing.
Or my pocket, or the taxpayers'.
Yeah, taxpayers'. So, and with a million seven still pending, we got the fire prevention grant next, it'll come out, and then the AFG grant that'll come out, and I got an email today, this evening, about, well, when the mayor walked in about five fifteen, and telling me that I had to get a resolution from the council to approve, so we can move forward and make all the additional, we have to justify our spending, and then we bring it back to the council, after FEMA approves it, bring it back to the council, so they can wave their wand on it, but we gotta get through FEMA first. And, but we can't do any of that until the council says, yeah, it's fine, go ahead, and that kinda thing. So, but that's a lot of money for nine hundred and fourteen dollars. So I think we're doing our job on trying to, trying to keep the fire department and save the taxpayers as much money as we can save, and still get the equipment, such as the next thing down the line as we go, is with the AEDs, with the Eagles grant. So we're working hard at it, we're spending hours. The Safer Grant that we just did, probably took Skylar and myself, probably about, and Leslie was involved in it, too, with the budget numbers from two thousand and three on, we probably put forty to sixty hours in it, before Mike and Sean started looking at it, as far as the rewrites, and making sure everything made sense, and all that, before we submitted it. So we, it takes a lot of time, but it's the dedication we have for the city, and what we're trying to do.
Great job.
Working at it, thanks.
Anything for the chiefs? I do wanna mention Officer McCollis, retired Officer McCollis, funeral was yesterday, and I wanna extend my thanks to Chief Newberry, and the department for the great representation that they had over there, and also wanna extend my thanks to the Burlington PD, and the Monde County Sheriff's Department, and Westbury Fire Department for having representation at the funeral, it was very well attended, and along the route, the procession route, Burlington officers lined up to give a final salute over by Alto Lea Public School, and there's a very moving service, first time I ever attended a service where the deceased had the final words. Deb had a pre-recorded message for everybody, and she had a song that she also sang, it was, it was really, it was neat, kinda neat. So I wanna extend those thanks to all the departments that did attend, we'll send them some thank you notes, too. Anything else for public safety? Utilities.
I don't have anything.
Anything going on in utilities either this week, unless, Kelly, Leslie, you heard anything, water issues or anything, pool issues?
They've been working at the pool, just, I think, just maintenance things, getting...
Sanitation, hands are not here, we did have a bid opening today on the west lift station improvements, and only had one bidder, and it was from Kia Cut Contractors, and the bid came in at three hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars, and, which is a little bit, about sixteen percent higher than what the engineer's estimate was. Dave is going back and checking all the numbers, and we'll have a bid award resolution for you on next, next council meeting. Other staff report, guys have anything, Kelly, Leslie? This time, open floor, up to anyone wishing to rest the council on matters of another News media's rushing to the mic. We'll go to new business. Item number one is to consider an ordinance amending the auctioneer licensing, which during the recodification, this was, I guess our auction license went on a yearly basis, and expired on March first of every year, but we had changed it to where now the licenses, when they come in to get a license, it's on a day-to-day basis, and that part of it, March first of our year, was still included and needed to be excluded, that's what the ordinance change is basically for. Motion with support, any discussion?
You had any input on this, Kelly?
No.
From auctioneers?
No. I've had them get, almost always, they get them for just the one event, because it was a hundred dollars for a year, or twenty-five dollars per auction.
Right.
By doing it one day at a time, it allows us to kinda know where they're gonna be, when they're gonna be, if they're gonna be closing the road, with the annual one, if they had a permit, we really didn't, they didn't have to come and tell us where or anything, so I haven't had any complaints at all about it.
Do we have any kind of a system to check and make sure that these people are actually getting a license when they hold an auction in town?
Unless the officer stops them and asks them for a copy of their license, if I see them signs up, I try to call them, which I have done before, but I, that's, there's really, that would be, that would be it, I guess, with, if the officers stop and ask them, they should have a license.
Once this is passed, third time, won't we just send it, a notice of that to every auctioneer?
I have done that, too.
I think we really should, to local southeast Iowa auctioneers, and maybe Sullivan's, and those that occasionally come through here, such as there was an auction last week out to the college. And so did you sell an auction license in the last two weeks?
No, I didn't see a sign out.
To local Southeast Iowa auctioneers and maybe Sullivan's and those that occasionally come through here. Such as there was an auction last week out to the college. And so did you sell an auction license in the last two weeks?
I didn't see a sign out for it, but...
I'm saying, we've got a, we've got a code and a rule here and we've got...
Unenforceable.
We've got no system to enforce it, that's my point. There was an auctioneer in town, had an auction out to college last week. And I was pretty sure he didn't have a license, but...
You know, that's something we can do, Kelly. If you did send out who it was and if they see that there's an auction going on, they can stop and check if you have not sent them out any list. If you'd just give us a list of the yearly, like you do with the solicitors reports.
As I issue them, like I just sent him, Frank, an email saying that we issued a fireworks permit. So they're kind of aware that that's been issued.
And I can just instruct them to start checking if they haven't received anything from you?
And the problem from the auctioneer's side is some towns require them, some towns don't. Some counties require them, some counties don't. So they don't know and they, you know, it's the, don't ask the question if you don't want to know the answer type of thing. You know, but, so they get caught up in it, too. But I think we need some way, I think to, if we're going to have this law and this code, then we need some form of way of keeping track of it and enforcing it.
And just like, I want to make it clear that the officers can't shut down the auction. It'll be a civil penalty and you'll have to cite them under the Civil Code for it. We can just, I'll basically report back to you that they held an auction. If they didn't have one, then we directed Mike to write on that civil ordinance.
Where we would have to change our code to...
To include that, it's a simple misdemeanor, yes. Like we, yeah, the same thing with the burn.
I think they'll all buy them if they know about it. I, I think this, this, this guy really didn't know and it's not required to have one in the town that he's from and he didn't ask. And there was nothing I could do at seven o'clock at night when I'm there and going, by the way, did you get an auction license? And he's like, uh, no.
If you know the name, let me know and I'll make sure they're on my list.
Yeah, we just need to send them something and say, hey.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Please?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Stewart?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number two is to consider purchase of AEDs for the fire department utilizing grant funds from the Eagle grant that they received. Want to get four of them for $3,991.
So move.
Support?
Motion with support. Any discussion?
Eagles are very happy that they was able to do this and help.
Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Stewart?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number three is to consider payment of Mike Nelson Concrete Paving for work on the Mall Roads project. If you remember, the retainage was $46,821. And the recommendation a couple of weeks ago was to retain $12,000 of that due to delays and stuff that they had. Now I see the recommendation is to retain $2,500 and pay Mike Nelson the retainage of $44,321.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Stewart?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Carried. I'm number four is to consider payment of French Rennick Associates for engineering services. One is for the Broadway and Agency Storm Sewer Project, $1,408.19. And the other is for Houston Straight Storm Sewer Project, $2,062.66.
Recommend both payments?
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Stewart?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number five is to consider payment of Snyder Associates for engineering services on the lift, on the West Lift Station, amount of $1,220.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Stewart?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Carried. I'm number six is to consider payment of Langland Construction for work on the Houston Sewer and Spot Repair Project. One, the final quantities payment of $475 and the retainage of $6,890.1 withholding $1,000. Actually, the actual retainage is $7,890.1, but withholding $1,000 of that for the seeding when it becomes acceptable.
Motion to approve both payments?
Support.
With support. Any discussion?
Have you talked, I'm sorry, have we talked to these guys about this?
I have not.
Randy talks to them.
We're just withhold, we're just withholding an extra $500, I understand it, or an extra $1,000.
You just said $1,000.
Yeah.
Well, it's in...
Yeah, but it was a $500 to begin with. The contract for...
We're holding a thousand back.
And we're just doubling that, another $500 to, you know...
I just, I guess my thought process would be they ought to know that before they get a check and go, what's the deal?
I think Randy's, I'm sure Randy's talked to them about it.
Okay. I'd just feel better about it if they knew about it before they got a check and wondered what happened. Because they did an excellent job on the work and...
Roll call.
Please?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Stewart?
Aye.
Motion carried. Number seven we're doing next week. I'm number eight is to consider pay for swimming pool concession staff. It's a couple of employees that's been, that've been having to act as assistants to the assistant manager and they're requesting pay that they're getting this assistant pay on the concession side because on the guard side, when the guard has to act as an assistant, that guard gets the extra pay due to the resolution that we passed earlier on wages and this part here was left off.
How much are we talking about, Leslie?
I don't know.
Well, the assistant, the head, assistant manager, assistant, assistant managers are $9.50 an hour and the concession's more than like $7.25 an hour.
So $2.25 extra an hour.
That's low. I don't think it happens very oft, it's not supposed to happen very often. There's the manager and the assistant manager, but from time to time, I think it's...
Time cards has been turned in, it's been notated, it's been 26 hours so far this year, it looks like.
26 hours total amongst the four instead of the three that she had listed?
Four.
I know, but she wrote, these three employees.
Well, she had, yeah, she added that one later. Dan said she could add it later.
So then there's 26 hours amongst these four employees.
Yes, among the four of them.
So $55. Okay. Make a motion to approve the payments?
Making them retroactive.
Per this statement here, making them retroactive to cover the hours they've already spent being the manager, even though I don't understand why we have a manager and an assistant manager and one of them can't be there. But so be it.
Motion.
Support.
Motion with support. Any other discussion?
According to Dan's memos he's been sending this weekly, it looks like the pool's been running fairly well. And of course, I think most of that's, of course, related to the weather and, and stuff. But anyway, it looks like everybody's doing a good job.
Yeah, it seems like they're having a party just by every...
Quite often, there's parties.
Weekend or during the week, I've noticed parties going on, too. It's good.
And even in this hot weather, though, it, you know, you get 5, 5:30 and everybody's gone. Even though I still agree we need to keep it open to 7, it's just such a shame. I drove by there on the way here tonight, you know, it's hot, it's a beautiful night and there's hardly nobody there, but...
I walked by at 6 o'clock last night, there was a handful of people there.
Yeah, but, but yet I seen one little kid heading that way carrying his little bag, you know, and I'm thinking, okay, you know.
Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Stewart?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Don't have any old business. I do have something, though, I'd like to present to the city. Deb and I attended a fundraiser, silent auction the other night for, to help fight the cure for cancer on July 6th. And for this, I'd like to present this flag to the city on behalf of our family. It was flown over in Iraq on August 6th, 2011 and it's got a certificate with it. Let it be known that this flag is symbol of freedom and resolve of the United States of America was hung in the 389th Engineer Company Tactical Operations Center, ballot Iraq on the 6th of August, 2011. And it's presented to the 389th INCO Family Readiness Group who donated this as a silent auction. Item, there you go. And it's on behalf of the 389th Company in support of America's partnership to rebuild a sovereign Iraq during Operation New Dawn, appreciation of your support and encouragement. I know there's quite a few members or residents from West Burlington that have served in the, in the military and have served in Iraq and I thought that'd be a nice addition to our display cabinet.
Absolutely. You got to get that little certificate framed, too, or something.
Yeah, I got that.
That'd be nice.
So...
Thank you, sir.
We'll do that. Anyone having anything to bring up to the council on matters we did discuss or didn't discuss tonight? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Support.
A little favor.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much. I can afford a lunch tomorrow here.
Um, we're going to have a meeting on Tuesday, so we're going to discuss all that stuff. And they were just coming up with some of the ideas for flyers and stuff, so probably sometime next weekend.
Turn it to us.
All right, just let me know. Thanks.